This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
We're three minutes late, but I'm going to open up the meeting for the December 7th Southampton Planning Board meeting. I got a message from John Furman from BHB that he's just wrapping up another Zoom meeting with the South Hadley Conservation Committee, and he asked if we might take Red Barn Storage out of order for a few minutes until he gets on. Given that, I didn't hear from Paul that he would not be making it. However, Cindy is with us tonight, and Cindy sent me an email earlier in the day stating that she had viewed the Red Barn Storage meetings for the stormwater previously per the Mullen Rule requirement. So she will be eligible to vote with us this evening in the event that Paul's not here. Then we will have a quorum since Sarah has departed us.
No, no issues with that. No issues. We're waiting on John Furman.
He said by 7:15, but he said they're wrapping up, so it could be sooner than that.
Okay, that's fine, Paul.
The Authority Conservation Commission likes to talk a lot, so.
And that comes from, that comes from experience, eh? Given that, I'm going to move down the line on the agenda. We have two waivers that came in asking for our waiting, our right of first refusal on land. And I'll read them to you. First one came from the offices of Lyon and Fitzpatrick in Holyoke regarding Crooked Ledge Road. This office represents Jonathan Stolpinski and Danielle Stolpinski, who own property located at Crooked Ledge Road being parcel two as more particularly described in a deed recorded in the Hampshire County Registry of Deeds book 14701, page 193. The property is currently assessed as plus or minus 12.9 acres and is shown on Southampton map 22 lot 17 and subject to the lien imposed pursuant to general laws, chapter 61. There was hereby given that the section 14, that a conversion of use is proposed to residential from the current protected use. And it closes a copy of the most recent recorded lien. Light of Jonathan and Danielle Stolpinski's intention to remove Crooked Ledge Road from chapter 61. We would appreciate your expediting the release of the town's rights on said property or advising otherwise. So all we do in this instance, as you're familiar, is waive our right to the select board or forward to the select board, and they act on it accordingly. I'm not personally familiar with it. Are you, Cindy?
Yes, Marla of the Conservation Commission forwarded that letter to me and the Open Space Committee for our meeting of this recent Thursday. That letter was not addressed directly to the Open Space Committee, but she just, you know, asked us if we had an opinion. We have a member of our committee, a new member named Stephen Johnson, who is highly familiar with chapter 61 and all its idiosyncrasies. And he was, he raised some concerns, which ultimately ended up with the assessor's office, that the proper affidavit was not filed by the buyer, Mr. Stolpinski, at the time of the purchase, which wasn't very long ago. It was in October. And we didn't have an opinion on to, as to whether or not the town should waive its right of first refusal. But we did raise the question that there were some perhaps inconsistencies in what has happened so far. So the assessors are aware of that. The proper affidavit was not filed. And that's what I know about it. I know where it is. It's part, he bought two parcels at the same time. One of them is actually got frontage, I think, on Crooked Ledge. And the other, this particular parcel has no frontage on any public roads. So it's, his intent is not entirely clear whether he's going to develop it or whether he's going to build it for, you know, build something for a family member. Of course, he wouldn't have to take, you know, he has taken it to 61, but we wouldn't, you know, offer the right of first refusal under that circumstance. That's what I know. So it's a little vague right now, so.
Yeah, but for all intents and purposes, is the, is the town interested in this? And I mean, this, I wouldn't expect this board is certainly interested in it. But how he develops it is neither here nor there is whether we, we want to waive our right on that and forward it on to select board.
That's true. I feel like there's too many questions. I don't have an opinion on whether I'm able to say we should waive our right at this time. So if we go to vote, I'm going to abstain from the vote.
Given the circumstances there, I can understand your opinion. Dan, do you have any thoughts?
Well, I mean, if Cindy, who is familiar with the situation, says there's too much ambiguity to make it, to make a proper decision, then I, I, I appreciate that opinion of hers. And I would, I would follow suit and abstain from voting just until we have all, all the information we need. Richard?
The thing that, go ahead, Richard.
I would note that the question before the board and the town is whether the town is interested in acquiring the property. That's what the right of first refusal is. So does a town want to acquire the property? It's not a matter of whether there's, it is inconsistent even following the statute. That's on the tip, my experience typically the either town council or the assessors bring up to the attorney represented. But the question is, does the town see a public use for this property? And therefore would be interest in acquiring it. If you don't refuse, if you exercise your right of first refusal, then town needs to proceed to actually appropriate the money and do the acquisition. Because what that would do is your action would then impede any buyer from making a purchase on it.
Yeah, we understand that. They were just, as, as I pointed out, that there were some inconsistencies in the filing. So from the Open Space Committee, we did not discuss whether or not it was recommended that we, the town, acquire it. It's not a super large parcel. I don't believe it's connected to any other conservation property. But I'm just telling you that I'm not going to vote on, because I don't have, I have a personal opinion. Maybe that's where I should come from. So I can't represent the Open Space Committee.
Okay, I misunderstood some, what you were saying. Sorry. Yeah, so I can vote.
Yeah, whether there's legal issues with the deed or whatever else before Richard chimed, and that was my thought, that that's really not our issue. It's whether, you know, we, we deem this parcel to be valuable enough for the town to pursue. It doesn't make any connections to anything else out there that I'm aware of. So I'm going to ask if we have a motion to waive our right of first refusal on this parcel.
I'll make the motion to make the right or waive our right of first refusal on this parcel.
I'll second it. Any other further discussion? All in favor?
I.
I.
I'm abstaining.
Cindy's abstaining. Okay. Second title, a letter we have here, compliance with mass general chapter 61A. This comes from Bay State Title on Escrow out of East Hampton on a property for Christine Canton, 20 acres on E Street. Please find a copy of the letter dated direct to the board of selectmen requesting a waiver of the option to purchase lot one and lot three on E Street shown on the enclosed plan, which is subject to provisions of chapter 61A. And they're asking for our advisement on that. I think you both are familiar with that. That came up before us on an A and R not too long ago, where there were three lots, lots one, two, and three. Lots one and three, they want to develop. And lot two is a big parcel in the back that they are going to keep in chapter 61, to my knowledge. But they're asking that lots one and three be taken out of chapter 61, and we waive our right on that.
A little background on that, even prior to the A and R, that came before us, the town Jeepers Crow, two years ago, maybe. I'm pretty bad at remembering all the dates. And that was discussed in multiple committee meetings, Conservation Commission, maybe even Housing, and also Select Board, I believe. And at the time, the decision was, as I recall, that we would waive our right of first refusal. And the particular person who was, who was a developer was contemplating purchasing it and developing it. Somehow there was some kind of shift in the arrangement, and that never happened. It went back into chapter 61. So that's just a little background. I moved that the town waive its right of first refusal on this, two lots on the Canton property.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Cindy, seconded by Dan. Further discussion? All in favor? Dan?
Aye.
Cindy?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, thank you. And I will forward our response on that to the select board. Okay, now we can get to our Red Barn Storage agenda item. Now that Mr. Furman has joined us, John Furman from BHB is here. Mark Reed is here from Heritage Surveys and Engineering, who is on behalf of the applicant for James and Eugene Labree for rent barns, storage application for stormwater and college highway here in town. So I'll ask Mark, in a little background here for those of you to catch up on, that there was a continuance that was requested at the last meeting. So Heritage and the Labreese could answer the questions for the stormwater that was derived from John Furman and BHB associates, who he represents on the peer review. And you all were sent copies of that. And I sent today BHB's final response. And we'll ask Mark, between Mark and John, to address those issues. So Mark, you can go ahead. And if you want to show that response, or John, the, the letterhead, feel free.
Okay, good evening. Two things I want to just say to begin with. Jim Labree is unfortunately not being able to meet, make tonight's meeting, and he apologizes to the board. Secondly, the fee for the consultants for BHB and Mr. Harris, the amount was dropped off at Town Hall today. I'm quite sure with the town clerk, Paul?
Yep, I heard from Jim. It's all set.
Okay, so, so that's, should be taken. So we did receive peer review from, from John Furman. We have responded in writing to those items, as well as updated the set of plans, which I can share with the board if you want the set of plans. And maybe, John, you want to go through your, your list on your end of things?
Yeah, why don't you run through the updates, Mark, and then I'll just go through the, the final letter.
Okay, I'll put the set of plans up on the screen here. Come on. All right, where did it go? Oh, that's the letter. Where's my plans? All right, so let me stop sharing that so I can reopen it here. Can everyone see the set of plans?
Yes.
So the set of plans are dated December 1st, 2022. The cover sheet is pretty self-explanatory. The existing conditions plan, there were no changes to it. The overall site plan, a couple of major changes that were added to the plan on this particular sheet, and there's another sheet that I'll show you, is that the stormwater basin now has all four to one slopes and has been reconfigured to meet those requirements as before. It was a three, a three to one slope. And a couple other noted areas of, it's a table, for instance, to, for the inverts proposed. Also added to this plan were soil logs and depths to seasonal high groundwater in the ledge within the stormwater system is added to the sheet. Excuse me. Sheet three is really the sheet that has the bulk of all the details, because it's a larger scale and easier to do. Again, reflects the stormwater basin revisions to be four to one slopes. It has same invert table for structures to the left of the legend. It shows the service connections coming into the building. So we have overhead, I'm sorry, underground electric and telephone communications coming into the building. There is no gas available in this section of town. Of course, and then there's a molitorium on it. So it would be served by underground electric from an existing pole on College Highway itself. Switch down here. We've added a sheet being sheet four, the construction staging plan. And this plan details a temporary stormwater basin during construction for use at the rear of the site. And there's, there's a water quality swale system that will go in here in the future, or when it's final. This area would be dedicated for that stormwater, temporary stormwater basin, as well as a proposed building and laydown stockpile area, which is located on the south side of building A and B, within the limits of work. We've also put right on this plan, a project construction sequencing, starting from placement of the erosion control barriers to final cleanup, outlined directly on the plan itself, as well as this section. Oops, went too far. Details on siltation barriers, erosion control specifications, vegetated cover specifications for final grading and vegetation of the entire site. Let me zoom out here. I forgot something. I don't think I forgot anything on here. Nope, whoops. And then lastly, we added a couple of details relative to comments relative to the silt barriers and catch basin protection in swales, existing catch basins, filter fabrics on basins and so forth. We also submitted a complete set of revised, or a summary of the revised drainage calculations for the project. The, we are well below any of the standards. So that our stormwater system has a lot of capacity with it. And that's what I was mentioning before we started to Richard, that this site has the flexibility and is large to be able to have those safeguards in place. So that's kind of the rundown on the plans. Maybe I can have John go through his letters if he wants, or I can answer any questions on the plans or comments that the board members may have.
How do you want to handle that, John?
I think it'd be easy just to go through the, the last letter, Paul, if there's no objections. Mark kind of covered the hotspots in, but it'll just go through and, you know, identify the things that we noted and then how they were addressed. So what, so you should, you should have received the first report from us November 14th. And it, so what we tend to do, I'm just scrolling through it. Anytime we do a review, if there's, there's two colors in it, the red are comments addressed to the applicant to look at, and the green are just kind of notes to the, the planning board to kind of consider. We did include an aerial photo of the site, which we kind of do because it helps for those that aren't familiar with it. I drive by this every day on my way to work, and I never realized that the parcel went all the way back here. So it's, it's always interesting to look on it from an area view, just to get the size of, of how things are. So we submitted the memo. Mark and Heritage looked at it. They updated it, provided a response to comments. And then what we did is we looked at those revised documents. And we created a second memo dated today. And, you know, anything that was already addressed in the first memo, we've deleted. So it didn't turn into a 25-page document. If there's any red or green ones in there, it's just noting something more for the applicant or the planning board. And any new comment we have, we dress as a date and we put the in bold. So just for the board's record, these were supposed to be slashes, but my fat fingers were over too far on the keyboard when I typed it. So that's supposed to be today's date. I'm not really sure why it came out like that, but pardon that. So as we get through on, basically on page two, there are a number of dates that your ordinance requires for inspections. And they're, they're listed here, you know, initial inspection, prior to site plan approval, erosion control, backfilling of utilities, and the completed project. So the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan has been updated to include those. And at this point, they don't have actual dates on it. So our recommendation is that we include a approval condition in the decision, which just says, you know, prior to building permit, these are the dates when we expect to need these inspections. And again, those are fluid. If we have a wet spring and these things all get slid out, it's just something as a kind of a tickler to, to note that we've got to do those inspections. Going down through the contents of the plan, the utilities which are missing, electric, telephone, were all added on there. And as Mark said, there's no gas in that area. Interesting, the soil logs, it were provided. Mark noted the estimated seasonal high groundwater on sheet two, but on sheet five, there's the actual soil logs. And what's interesting about those is that you would think that where there's a wetland adjacent to it, that the soil would be actually pretty poor. They got great soil there. They got a nice, fine sand, which is just amazing when you think of like how this whole thing got formed. You know, the glacier put sand here and then 100 feet over put junk that made a wetland. Can't figure it out, but you know, it's, it's good. The basin is in nice soil. It'll infiltrate well. As he said, inlet protection details were added and a general sequence of construction for that sheet four. That's handy, because part of the thing is, many times we've seen contractors go in and just obliterate a site. And for the whole length of the project, they've got mud. They've got stuff kind of going everywhere. This really puts a good organized plan together and keeps everyone happy and keeps violations from occurring. So that's a very handy plan to have. The Plenary Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan has been, been updated. So what's unusual about this is, is that the EPA issued new regulations in February, and it caught a lot of people off guard. You have to have a training program now in order to do inspections for the erosion control barriers. An EPA training program. And when they enacted it in February, they gave everybody a one-year grace period. So that grace period's ending February of 2023. After that, you have to have that, that training program completed to be a certified inspector. So this is, you know, the, the requirements are in there. I'm not sure whether there is going to actually be an inspector through Heritage or whether the contractor is going to be responsible for providing his own. But just one thing for the board to recognize is that that inspection program or the inspector has to be, has to be trained for that. Getting down into here, the infiltration. So the basin itself does not utilize infiltration as part of its, its design. It's basically a kind of a catch and release type of program. But we do use infiltration for some of the water qualities. And there was a rawls rate that was assumed for it. And we didn't have any soil data. So now looking at the soil data and seeing what was assumed, there's a very appropriate rate. So that, that, that design is, is, is pretty solid. You should not have any issues with it. It's nice to see it. Mark talked about that plan with the temporary sediment basin for construction. A lot of people say, oh, I'm going to make a basin. I'll just use that for construction, then I'll clean it out later. They never work the same afterwards, because you get all the construction fine materials settling in there. So having something separate for construction and then a finalized one is, is the right way to go. So that's a, you know, kudos for incorporating that. The soil testing showed that we were maintaining the two-foot separation between the bottom of the system and groundwater, which is a DEP requirement. We're good with that. As Mark mentioned, the side slopes have been flattened out. And, and Mark commented on it right away is that this site is so big, you have a lot of flexibility with this. We've had sites that are, you know, thimbles, and, you know, they put a basin in with two to one slopes. And now they got to double it. This was, this was a great, a great site. There is one question we had was, you know, the, because it's a rental space, self-storage, how are hazardous materials going to be kept out of it? And, you know, Mark responded, or Heritage responded, that the rental agreement will actually prohibit any hazardous materials from being stored there, which is, which is great. This one I left in green, and it's a little bit for discussion. So your ordinance requires that runoff from parking areas be treated by an oil and water separator. So this parking, this pavement area, I should say, uses sheet flow and a water quality swale along the wetland directing it to the, to the basin. Other communities I know that use a very similar stormwater management bylaw, use catch basins for that purpose. So you have a catch basin in the front where most of the traffic will be. Because once you get past the gate, the traffic kind of goes anywhere it wants to. But right at that entrance, everybody passes right through there. So that area is protected by a catch basin, which Mark noted, has a hooded outlet on it. And I wouldn't categorize the pavement within the, the self-storage areas as a parking area. It's, it's certainly, they're not striped off. I mean, you're coming in, you're unloading, and then you're, you're leaving. So it's a decision that the board has to make. But we feel very confident with the design that's shown, that you won't have any issues as it's presented. And just to note that if the, if the, the board decides that they do want a traditional type of stormwater collection, it's, it's a major effort to redesign this right now. All the slopes got to get changed. They have to create more refined catchment points. Uh, they have to create more refined ca- uh, catchment points. It would, it would be close to a, a redesign. Um, I, I, I mentioned it in the first review and I feel comfortable with what's shown here, particularly with the stone water quality swell. That's a big swell and I think you're not going to have any issues with it, but you, you just need to discuss that as a, as a board. Uh, just kind of going through, um, in this section, the way I have it typed, these are all key together. So I couldn't just delete them because it renumbered everything out. So I just typed, that's why A is omitted, uh, versus it just disappearing. Um, so, uh, you know, the, the response to the DEP standard states that the construction shall be staged um, to limit disturbance and that sequence of construction plan that, uh, was provided basically addresses that. Uh, D divert uncontaminated water around the exposed area. Again, the construction plan states that, and it also adds a note that any areas that are, uh, not being worked and exposed for more than 14 days need to be stabilized. So that takes care of those. Um, and this, uh, item G, uh, details for erosion sediment control. Really, the only one that was missing was the catch basin inlet for that one basin, and that was added on to sheet five. Uh, kind of going on here, uh, we questioned, uh, the contractor laydown area and I believe that is, uh, Mark, if I'm not mistaken, it's behind, I think I saw it behind, uh, one of the, the main buildings as you drive into the, to the left. If I recall, that's where it was.
Yes, yeah, it's on the south side of building A and B.
Yep, yep. Um, and then the statement complying with all other local, state and federal permit requirements, that statement was added to the plan. Uh, there was a note, uh, added to the plan ref- that references the SWIP and also requirements for a 14-day maximum exposure. That was all taken care of. Uh, off-site tracking, um, was taken care of and there is a, a note adding that, um, it needs to be addressed immediately. Uh, should it be, um, uh, a problem. So we're kind of getting out of the plan design and into the, the maintenance piece of this, the operation, maintenance and inspection agreement. There's a draft agreement that was provided and basically it's the, uh, long-term maintenance plan, you know, attached to this agreement. It has the inspection sheets in it. Um, it includes the language that you're required, uh, under your ordinance about the town being able to go in and perform improvements if after proper notice, the owner or responsible party for the site neglects to do anything. So that is, uh, in good shape. All the board need to do is really execute that, uh, once we're ready to go. Uh, the maintenance responsibility, the, um, uh, we couldn't tell from the original application, um, uh, who's actually responsible for this. But it's the applicant and the landlord are actually the same entity. So you're going to see Jim Labrie out there with a broom, basically sweeping the pavement. Um, but that's all set. It's, it's good to go and it acknowledged by the, uh, the comment. And also a note that any future transfer of the property to another entity, uh, they will, uh, properly notice the, the board so that that responsibility follows that property, uh, around. Uh, the performance guarantee, uh, you guys require this to make sure that the stormwater management system is installed and it's operating property. Um, very detailed estimate was provided by the contractor. Uh, I believe the total to sixty-one thousand six hundred dollars. We reviewed that with the components, uh, and it's an appropriate amount for, um, for the project. So that would be what we recommend for, uh, the bond for the, that, that maintenance guarantee. Uh, and then just a couple more comments, uh, as Mark had said, the invert elevations for the piping were added to the sheet. So those all checked out. Uh, the stormwater calculation, uh, this one, I talked to Mark about originally and we were both kind of confused, but they actually provided a, uh, a, a response that made sense. So if you have a design point that you have a, a, in the software that summarizes the outlet from the site and you have all these items going to it, if you total up all those items individually, they total up more than what this one spot shows. So Mark went through and adjusted it, even though they totaled more, they were, as Mark said, they were still way under the existing flow, so it didn't matter. But the reason it does that, which makes perfect sense, if you have three items going into one item and two items, the peak of that flow hits this item at the same time, but this third one is 10 minutes later, then you can't just simply add up everything. This one here is going to be le- less, and that makes perfect sense. And it looks like, uh, you guys had to do some research on that to figure it out because I couldn't figure it out. Uh, so thank you for, uh, enlightening me as well. Um, the drainage summary is updated. Uh, we still have a reduction between, uh, pre and post-construction. And again, the soil's information has been provided. So it's our opinion that, uh, the applicant did a great job in responding to all the review comments. And that the board now has all the information they need to motion on this project.
Thank you very much, John. Very comprehensive explanation.
Thank you.
Um, any other questions from you, Mark?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm good. Well, thank John for his review.
Richard, um, questions, concerns?
A couple of questions. John, when you looked at the cost estimate, did you factor in that if there's an issue, it'll be done at, by the town, which municipalities tend to have additional costs associated when they do work, or do you look at it as just private contractor costs?
Uh, I, I made the assumption that that adjustment was already made and the number is given to me. Um, because I, when you look at the piping that you have, you have one catch basin. You have a roll piping, you have a, I think it's a water quality unit, and then you have piping going out to the manhole. So the actual hard infrastructure is not very much. The majority of it is a riprap and the grading. And sixty-one thousand for all of that work, I thought was a little heavy. So when I looked at it, I figured they had already made the adjustment for prevailing wage.
Okay. The reason I say that is my typical practice in the past has been that when an engineer provide cost figure, I always recommend to planning board to adjust that by 10, 25% above that, to factor in municipal costs associated with acting on the performance guarantee, because there's a legal cost associated to that, plus there's inflationary costs that it if it's a year or two years down the road, it may be a little bit higher. So I've, I've always recommend planning boards take engineers' costs and tweak it up a little bit to cover other factors that may not have been built into it or such as inflation.
Richard, just one thing, um, the, the estimate that was provided for sixty-one thousand six hundred dollars was the actual construction of the stormwater system in itself, which is very large. So in the future, if any maintenance is needed to be done in there, that is already constructed. It's already done. Um, so that, you know, I think it's like John said, it's, it's, um, it's a, and I know the contractor knows the change of pricing and every day things change, um, has made sure that it's adequate on his end also.
I understand that I'm not looking at this performance guarantee as being for maintenance, but I'm looking at the, that this be a guarantee in the event is something happens and the project is partially done and there has to be construction done to complete it. Make sure that the site doesn't become a mess. Uh, another factor, now you mentioned the oil gas separator and I agree with John that you know, redesign this does make a whole lot of sense, but sometimes you'll see storage places and this may be addressed in the rental agreement, I'm not sure, that people use it to store the vehicles. Recreational vehicles in particular. So you do in fact have some long-term parking occurring there. And I think it could be addressed either in the rental agreement, if that's not allowed, or in the board's decision to condition that it not be used for storage of uh, vehicles on a long-term basis. Because typically it's not a parking lot. It's not where, like grocery store, office building, where you're going to have fifty cars parked there and for eight hours in a day.
No, you, you make a good point. It, you know, my sense is that it's strictly going to be a storage facility and it probably won't be having vehicles there, but I, to ensure that, we could probably condition that.
Yeah, sure, you could. I know that, uh, the applicant, um, does not want any outside storage of any vehicles or other products. Um, everything that is, and it's, the site is tight as far as, you know, trying to compact it. Um, there's only thirty feet around the buildings, uh, to allow for fire and, uh, vehicles to get around. Um, so that I know he does not want any outside storage of vehicles, um, or of any of that type. Um, I could see if, you know, we had a large paved area that lends itself to doing that. Um, that would be a concern, but I know he does not want anything outside, keep it clean and to look. But that's a condition you can put on there. We have no problem with conditioning it, that no outside storage is allowed.
I'm just thinking particularly if five years from now they sell to a, another entity that
Yep.
I mean, I have the same view, uh, condition would survive that transfer. Um, when, uh, I understand there's estimated dates for sequencing and John, you can pipe in on this. Would that be a benefit to having the condition of the board that changes in those, uh, inspection dates be not, uh, provided to the board for their information?
I, I think that, that we don't have them now, Richard. So I think there is a condition that we recommended that one be put in, that they be provided. I think, uh, elaborating on that, that as they get closer and those dates provided, uh, giving them the flexibility to move them based on uh, conditions would be appropriate. So, yeah, we're already requi- we already suggested having that. I think maybe, uh, enhancing it would be good.
And regarding the, I think the inspection, the requirement for a, um, EPA certified inspectors, something I had not realized had occurred, um, perhaps one of the conditions the board should look at is a condition that ins- inspections be done by a EPA qualified inspector, just to make sure that somebody doesn't try to lowball the cost of inspections by having their laborer go out there and do the inspections for them. Some contractors do that, as you well know.
Oh, yeah. We've seen it all.
Oh, yeah. And then you wonder, how did that ever happen?
Exactly.
That's one comes out. As far as zoning, I think meets all the zone requirements. Uh, those are my own comments on the stormwater.
Thank you. Dan or Cindy, anything from your end? Cindy?
Uh, I have just a general question. It has nothing to do with stormwater, but I'm aware that in about every community around here we saw something come before this board about the number of storage containers and storage sites coming up. There's one on Route 10 going north in North Hampton on the hillside there. Now, maybe our society has a desperate need for putting our stuff somewhere because we're constantly buying stuff. But, um, I asked this because, um, well, it's perfectly fine. It's zoned, you know, and, and I actually drove by the site the other day and, you know, it's kind of in the trees and all of that. You know, what if, uh, I don't know if this particular applicant would abandon it, but what if they just don't get enough people to rent it? It just the same question I asked about the sto- the solar installations. What, what's going to happen if that has to all be removed someday because it's empty or, you know, what? I, I realize that's just a general question about all this kind of stuff that's being built. Anybody have any thoughts on that?
I think it's the same question as there's a grocery store down the road and somebody and let's say Big Y is down the road and Stop and Shop wants to come in, put nothing there. Does markets, is a market sufficient for two grocery stores? If not, one of them has to be converted, sometimes through demolition, sometimes simply through alteration of the facility. One benefit of, um, self-storage facilities is generally they don't have a huge infrastructure and they do inv- involve, they lend themselves to adaptive reuse of the site without substantial demolition, not de- de- demolishing a, uh, two-story concrete building, for instance. You, you tend, and most of them don't have a lot of utilities in them, so they're not them playing facilities. And the site is already pretty much leveled, so it does lend itself to adaptive, um, redevelopment.
That's good. Um, that is a problem. We've got empty buildings in every community around here and, um, it's good to know this one could be readapted or somehow changed. That's just my general comment. I don't have, there's nothing to do with stormwater. Thank you.
Ian, do anything from here?
No, I'm, I'm good. I think the review by Mr. Furman, uh, was completely inaccurate and the work that Mark has done has entered, answered his questions. And I think Mr. Harris has also brought up a couple of good conditions we should consider.
A very good presentation and very good response from, uh, Heritage. I appreciate you, uh, addressing that, Mark.
Thank you, Paul.
Given that we have all the information we have set before us, I'm going to ask now that, um, to make it, someone make a motion to, uh, close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Cindy and seconded by Dan. Any other further discussion? All in favor? Cindy?
Hi.
Dan?
Hi.
And I will say hi. All right, given that, close the public hearing. Um, I would like to now have the board discuss, um, and Richard, you can, um, record this as you go along because you're going to draft the decision on this, but uh, conditions that we, uh, want to implement for, for this, uh, application. Uh, the first one was the, uh, bond. We're looking for a bond amount. And do we believe that the sixty-one thousand is going to be adequate or are we going to increase that?
I think it was sixty-one thousand six hundred, wasn't that right?
Right.
But is it, again, as Mark, uh, as Mark stated, that was for the entire, um, installation of that. So, um, do you think that's overkill or?
John Furman suggested that was a good amount.
Yeah, we, we do spot checking on these when we, when we grab them. So the, uh, I, I'm assuming you guys have all seen the, uh, email from the contractor that had the breakdown on it. Um, so what I did, I, I use RS means, the, the, our latest edition, which is twenty twenty-two. And I just went through and assigned numbers to it. And I came out actually less than the sixty-one six. I think I came out to be somewhere around fifty-three. So when I looked at it with sixty-one six, I, I, I figured they might be already be including the prevailing wage upgrade on it. But even if they haven't, the sixty-one six, I thought was large compared to what our actual estimate was.
Uh, I say we leave it.
Well, if you want to put it in round numbers, fifty-three, John says, uh, sixty thousand. How's that sound?
That's fine by me.
Fine by me.
I would suggest, I would suggest just leave it sixty-one six.
Sixty-one six?
That's my suggestion. That's the engineer's estimate and
That's true.
Okay, six, sixty-one six it is.
And one question I might want to address is was what form do you require of the performance guarantee? Will you accept a letter of credit? Do you require a cash bond? What, what type of, um?
We, we've done both. Most of them have been letters of credit.
Okay. I would suggest that we specify in the condition of forms guarantee in, uh, format of a letter of credit except for the board and amount of sixty-one six then.
Paul, if, if I could, when I was on the board, didn't we have an attorney come in at one point and say that there was, uh, uh, some of the mass general law specified that a letter of credit was not acceptable as a form of payment because it had no actual money associated with it? Do you remember that?
It's been a while. I
It's been a while. I, I don't recall the details, John.
Yeah, I thought it was, I, I can look it up, but I thought it was either an actual uh, cash cashier's check, a, a passbook or a bond. I, I thought they said a letter of credit wasn't acceptable.
Richard, what's your sense on that? You've been in this.
The one thing is.
Uh, can I have, uh, I guess your iPad for a story?
It's anything, honey. Hey, Joy, you got a meal. Joy, sorry.
Uh, one thing is.
I'm sorry. I didn't realize that was on.
The um, the issue of what, whether a letter of credit is acceptable or not has came up on subdivisions. This isn't subdivision. A performance guarantee under stormwater or special permit is basically any type of a uh, performance guarantee the board finds acceptable. I've consistently had attorneys, town councils, as well as councils from other entities express that a letter of credit is fine. Three-party agreement is fine. Um, I have more problems with those than did a letter of credit because a credit does have a financial amount set aside that you can redeem. Just, it's better than the insurance bond. Because bonds, you had to file in the state in which the insurance company is based, which oftentimes is Delaware or Minnesota, and the cost is outrageously high to do that. A letter of credit, if it's on local institution, it's pretty, usually pretty easy to redeem.
And you were, you, and you were accepting those right up until the time you retired from South Hadley, correct?
They still accept them. Yes.
Okay, then we'll go the route of the letter of credit then. Uh, with the, with the terms that you uh, mentioned.
And, and just note that it'll state that if they wish to provide a cash deposit or cashier's check, that's acceptable as well, but no, most don't do that.
Okay. Okay, second um, condition that was mentioned of waiving the oil and water um, separator and putting in a condition about no parked vehicles uh, in the storage area.
I agree with that.
I, I agree with that too, but there was just, in terms of the discussion that we just had about that, there was this reference to the fact that the applicant didn't want any parked vehicles outside, but I think there was this mention of what about inside parked vehicles such as ATVs or antique cars or something else? I mean, are we going to say that the rental agreement should specify no parked vehicles even inside the facility?
I wouldn't go so far as to say that, but definitely outside.
Can they leak on the inside too?
Oh, they, they probably could, but if they're, they're antiques and they're show cars and such, I would, I would expect that they would be in a little bit more pristine condition.
But they're not all antiques and show cars. There might be some other, you know, abandoned ATVs or.
Oh, I see what you mean.
I, I, I don't know that the regulations allow you to be that specific with uh, with the condition. I think outside, uh, you're well within your right to, to that because it, 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 something leaking would go right into the system, but inside the building, I think that might be a stretch. I don't think the regulations allow you to do that.
Hmm, okay.
All right, and another one um, brought up was the EPA, make sure that the inspector is EPA certified. Correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the other one, I'm uh, unsure of the language or the intent. Uh, Richard brought up something about the uh, sequencing, the inspections. Be more definitive on that.
That um, the applicant uh, must provide planning board with estimated dates for the ins- inspections as um, prior issuance of building permit. And if there's significant changes in those, those updates should be, they should be updated. Or they must be updated.
Okay. That's all I had jotted down. Is there anything else I'm missing?
I, I think you got it from our end, Paul.
That's everything I captured.
Richard, yes?
I I think so. And that's about everything. Oh, and standard condition be that you incorporate the plans as updated through December one of twenty twenty-two.
Right.
As well as minutes of the public hearings. And the uh, peer review and the responsive peer review.
I can come over and pick them up, Mark, if you want. The updated plans.
Okay, I, you want one set, Paul?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. I will have them the, the.
Unless, um, unless maybe Randall would uh, should have one.
Okay.
And the building inspector, maybe or no?
Um, sure, I, you. We can make three sets of the plans.
Yeah.
Okay.
Who is gonna inspect the site for the town? I assume Randall?
Uh, not necessarily. It could be, it could be uh, Mr. Furman's uh, company because they're uh, hired by the town on a contract anyway, right, John?
And we're still waiting for it to get executed, but yes, that is the, that is the rumor.
Yeah.
I, to be honest with you, I, I don't think Randall wanted uh, that responsibility. I, I'm pretty sure we've had these discussions before. He's got enough on his plate, but.
Most DPW superintends don't want that.
Right.
That burn.
So given, given the uh, conditions we just spoke about, I'd like a motion to um, accept the stormwater application for James and Eugene Labrie for Red Barn Storage.
Is it James and Eugene or was it just James?
No, James and Eugene.
Oh, okay. All right, so I will move that we accept the application for Red Barn Storage submitted by James and Eugene Rebley, Labrie with the conditions um, that we just discussed.
Second.
Motion's been made by Cindy and seconded by Dan. Any other further discussion? All in favor, Cindy?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
All, I, we have approved that um, permit and once the decision is uh, drawn up with the conditions, I will forward that to Mark and uh, and Jim Labrie. And would you like a copy of that as well, John?
If you don't mind, that'd be great. It just kind of puts a bow on the whole package.
Paul, can you, can you forward me uh, John's latest letter? I don't, I don't think we got that, that we'd be good. And then.
Okay, I'll send that over.
And then um, I could have the three sets of plans probably Friday afternoon or Monday. Okay. Okay, great.
That'll probably be over the first of the week.
Okay, great.
All right, once again, thank you very much, John. Um, nice, nice dealing with you again and seeing you.
Same here.
Yeah.
And seeing you all.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And we don't have a chance to see you before the holidays. Everybody have a, a good Christmas.
Yes.
Thank you, John. You too and your family.
Yep.
Thank you all.
Good night.
Okay. Next, we just want to get a um, brush up now, Richard, on um, going forward about the zoning revisions. Now, Ken Comey's work is done. Um, just have to wait for his report when it came to the uh, different housing aspects we talked about and zoning, et cetera. So E-code has to go, uh, are we presenting E-code in a public hearing? Or is that just directly going to town meeting?
No, the zoning chapter would need to come for a public hearing by the planning board.
Right.
When they get the revisions changed, you'll need to hold, you'll have to hold a public hearing. Uh, it has to go through Chapter forty-eight, Section five process, just like any other zoning amendment.
Okay, so I'm assuming uh, judging by the last um, communication I had with Deb Tuzinski for E-code, that that's going to be wrapped up like the first of the year, I guess, right?
Last I saw, they're waiting for the uh, amendment to the contract.
I, I had already signed off on that.
But I think you had referred it to the uh, town administrator. Is that what I'd seen?
I'll have to look back on it. I forwarded it over. I'm not sure where it's at. But live from my end of it, I, I approved it through um, planning board. But yes, Ed did tell me that um, I filed for additional ARPA funds to cover that cost, which wasn't included in the, the original money we got. So that I sent forward uh, on that request. So I'm, I'm assuming it's, it's, it's all ready to go. I'll follow up on it.
Because that's the question I have is whether that's been signed by the town and whether, because they're not going to begin work on the revisions until that gets signed.
She didn't indicate to me after I sent her the contract, when I signed it, she didn't indicate to me that there was any holdup anywhere.
The, that must have been a communication I didn't see then because last I saw was e- email from her and I think the town clerk had responded. I didn't see your response from you.
All right, let me uh, let me just connect with Ed on it, but as far as I'm concerned, uh, Deb didn't say um, there was any hangup, so.
But once, once they make revisions, then the planning board need to review it and then hold a public hearing. And it'll be a repeal and replace article. So you'll, the hearing will be to repeal existing zoning bylaw and place it with the qualified one as drafted by uh, General Code Corporation. And then once you hold the hearing, then you make a report to town meeting.
Now, those also had the changes that we, we had made to those certain chapters, correct?
A lot of the changes, yes.
So when that goes to town hearing, are we uh, are we going to just entertain questions on certain uh, chapters of that, or are we going to be going through it chapter by chapter?
I would recommend that the, that be posted on the town's website so people can look at it ahead of time.
Right.
And that you, you have to entertain comments on the entirety of the article.
Yeah.
Uh, but I would not go through a section by section description of the changes. I would just, at the hearing, I would just want to do a introduction that this is what we're doing and uh, section one is about this, section two is about this, and just go with a real quick summary on each of those the sections in the uh,
Mm-hmm.
E-code and zoning.
Okay. So I guess at our next meeting, um, if we have, are we, are we planning on meeting um?
December twenty-first?
Twenty-first, are we taking a holiday?
Holiday.
I, I can't, I can't remember what Ken, or, or did we hold that open for Ken to come back?
I think you may have held it open if he needs to come back, but I can, I would communicate with Ken and see if he really wants to meet on December twenty-first. My guess, he really would not want to.
Yeah, because I think, I think he's pretty much wrapped up and he was just gonna uh, put it all together and, and send it to us. The uh, the changes for us to uh, incorporate into the uh, bylaws. So all right, that's another thing I've got to do. Um, and that's about it, I guess. Anything else from your standpoint, Richard, before I dismiss you?
Nope.
Okay.
And I'll put December twenty-first on my calendar as a very, very tentative.
Yeah, I'm gonna too. Okay, great. So in the event we don't see you, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays to you and your family.
Same to you.
Thank you.
Take care. And I'll get, I'll try to get the draft decision of due tomorrow.
Sure, thank you. Okay, other business. All right, we had, uh, Dan had brought up and Cindy followed up on it too, discussion about uh, zoning uh, street address assignments for the conservation uh, properties that the town holds. Now, way back when, I'm looking at an email when Martha Lamy was the uh, the assessor in town. It was back as far as March of twenty twenty-one. That Marla, um, Marla had asked Martha to provide me uh, and assist in assigning address numbers to several conservation properties. So I looked at this and they've got uh, numbers assigned to them. But I, I, I can't, I can't remember if, if it was ever formally adopted because I was at Town Hall today and I saw Janine Labrie and she went into the uh, map. And none of these are listed. They're all listed. The address is listed in the Town Hall. But that's all well and good when it comes to um, a mailing address. But as far as a parcel being assigned for the public's accommodation to go visit and um, they'd like to know where they are, that's not on the assessor's map. So for all intents and purposes, I guess uh, I'll ask that we just review this again. Um, Glendale Road Zipta Farm, College Highway Lyman Family Conservation Area, and then the Alice Brown Conservation Area on Pleasant Street. So this is what had been carved out. Glendale Road, Zipta Farm, number ten, number twelve Glendale Road. Lyman Conservation Area and College Highway, number three sixty-two College Highway. And the Alice Brown Conservation Area on Pleasant Street, there's two of them. Uh, the northerly section would be seventy-two Pleasant Street and the southerly section would be sixty-six Pleasant Street. So I'm asking then that we formally adopt those addresses that we obviously went over before. It just never formally got adopted. So I'll ask if we can um, assign these numbers to these parcels. And I'll get that over to uh, the assessor's office.
Uh, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made by Dan and seconded by Cindy. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Okay, did we have any further, uh, Dan from uh, Mr., was it Mr. Herman? Okay, did we have any further, Dan, from Mr., was it Mr. Herman?
Yeah, yeah, I talked to him the other day and he said he wanted to attend another meeting to, to, before he made his final decision. And I texted him earlier and he's got the flu. So he's like, he's not, obviously not going to be there tonight. So he, he wanted to, he wants to make sure he knows what he's getting himself into before he makes any choices. So.
Maybe we'll wait until after the first of the year then, because as I told you, there is also another interested party that's willing to fill that vacated seat. I just want to give him a chance to familiarize himself more with the, the process and see if he, he wants to come on now or wait until the the next election when there could be another vacancy as well. So.
There, there's a third one to you. I, the person who actually moved into Sarah's house, which is two houses behind where I live, has pretty significant experience with public process and land, et cetera. And it's, it's a woman and she just moved in two days ago, but I mentioned that there was, you know, I thought an opening here. So she may, I urge her to attend a meeting. She's brand new in town, so maybe she can attend another meeting. And the second thing I'll say about this, Ed Gibson announced at a recent meeting, specifically the Public Safety Building Committee meeting, that they're working hard to tighten up the process for applying for an appointment, you know, a select board appointment. So there is the application, but they're also looking for a cover letter. So just keep that in mind if we're speaking to anybody who's a potential candidate.
Good.
I was wanting to mention, if you don't mind, Paul, one thing I know, I noticed about Sarah Stein leaving is that leaves an opening in our representation to the PVPC, because I, I had gotten an email from them earlier today about a meeting coming up soon. So.
Yeah, I'm the alternate on that. So.
Okay, good.
Until such time as we fill that. I'm, I'm the alternate on it.
Very good.
Joy had a item she wanted to bring up regarding affordable housing at the town meeting coming up in this, is that, is that this month or next month?
Next week.
Next week. Okay. So go ahead, Joy.
Hi. So yeah, next week, one of the articles on the warrant is for the Housing Trust Bylaw. And I know that's something that Housing Authority has discussed with Planning Board and Planning Board itself has discussed amongst itself and also with other citizens and contractors who stated that it'd be really helpful to have something like that in the town to pursue more affordable housing in town. So I think it would be beneficial if someone from Planning Board could just speak on behalf of Planning Board in support of the bylaw. Nothing really major beyond that, but just to show some support. You know, we have a lot of, we have Housing Authority speaking on behalf. Hopefully Virginia from CPC will be speaking on behalf. I will be speaking on behalf of the Select Board and I believe Finance Committee is, you know, supportive of it, but I think Planning Board being supportive of it will give it kind of a different twist than the normal who we, who we hear speak on, on certain things. And, you know, if there's any concerns, we have, you know, we've been really working with, with MHP to have talking points to come up with those concerns. But I think, I'm hopefully, I'm hoping that the more people speak up on behalf of it, the less concerns we will have.
So did you plan on attending that meeting?
I do.
Would you mind representing the board?
Sure, I will happily speak on behalf. I would be speaking anyway as a, just a citizen, but if you'd like me, shall we make a motion to say that this Planning Board supports? I, I will make that motion.
I second the motion.
That we support the warrant article regarding the formation of a public, sorry, of a yeah, public housing trust. Isn't that what it is, Joy?
Public Housing Trust Bylaw. Yeah.
Yes.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cindy, aye.
All right. So I'll speak and represent the Planning Board on that. Good. Thanks, Joy, for bringing that up. It's big.
Thank you. I really hope it works out. I think the town would really benefit from it.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, I have one warrant here from VHB and it's got to do with Gil Farm Estates. This, the money has been previously deposited a couple of years ago for Gil Farm Estates or peer inspections of the subdivision. In John's time, from October 2nd to October 29th, keeping an eye on it, came to $496.42. So I'd ask for a motion to approve his, his bill.
I move to approve that warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cindy?
Aye.
Oh, thank you.
Is that a reimbursed from the Gil Farm Estates? Do they reimburse that back to our account?
Uh, no, Gil Farm Estates and Fitch Farm Estates, back when they were approved, had to prepay. I think it was, my, my, my guess was $3,500 each in inspection fees for the, their subdivision. So it's been prepaid and it's held in our
We have an escrow account or something?
Like an escrow account, yeah. So this money will, you know, comes out of there. And anything after the subdivision is completed and it's, the road is accepted, et cetera. If there's any balance in their favor, they get it back. But if it's tapped out, they get nothing. And if there, there could be an overrun too. So they would be billed more for it, but that's probably highly unlikely, but they'll, they'll get reimbursed for any overpayment.
Okay. So it's not a direct reimbursement, but yet it is being paid for by the developer. Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, great.
And once again, to reiterate what Mark Reed said, both the solar people paid for the consultant fee, Richard Harris, and also the legal ads, and so did Red Barn Storage paid for the legal ad. Richard Harris's fee and also VHB peer review. By the way, the 21 day appeal period was over for the solar installation. So that decision was sent off to them. I don't have anything else unless there's some committee reports anybody would like to.
I can give, I can give you a couple of really quick ones. So the Public Safety Building Committee, Sarah was the chair. And we're truly going to miss her in many ways. She, of course, resigned. She was an at-large appointee to that committee. So there is an opening on the Public Safety Building Committee and that's being, that was posted on the town website. And if somebody knows someone, maybe with an engineering background or architectural background, that could do the same thing, put in an application with the town administrator with a cover letter. That would be great because we really need, this is going to be a monster project, very big. Secondly, our new chair is Mark Darnold. Do some of you know him? Do you know him, Paul? Yeah.
Yeah, he works for Mercer Design, didn't he?
He did. And he's, he's, he's really, in my opinion, quite a strong contributor to the committee and he's now the chairperson. So that's that. The third thing about that is to tell you that the request for quote, for, to perform the feasibility study for the Public Safety Building. And, and the feasibility study will help to identify the actual location. Because we, we, the committee had to submit to the Select Board, you know, recommendations for locations. And the recommendations were accepted by the Select Board and then that would go out and whatever firm is completes, is selected for the feasibility study, would be looking at all the different locations and providing the pros and the cons, et cetera, and, you know, all the details related to that. Well, unfortunately, the first time that was posted, we had something like 17 or something applicant, people require firms requesting the RFQ, but nobody submitted an RFQ, zero. So there were zero applications. So it's been reposted and I think the deadline for receipt is oh, I got it around here somewhere. It's like January, February, and then I think it's January. And then, and then the process would be that the committee review all, hopefully more than one application, perform interviews, et cetera, et cetera. And then ultimately come up with a recommendation that goes to the Select Board. The committee itself only makes recommendations. The authority to identify the firms is in fact the Select Board and ultimately will be the one to choose the site based on the facts that come in. So that's the process there. We work in parallel very closely with what's going on to build the new senior center. Rini Groden is on both committees. She's the liaison before, between both, and she, of course, is a Select Board member. She gives us reports and I'm not on that committee. I can only tell you what the report was. And it is that Abacus is the firm that was selected to do the feasibility study for the senior center. And they, maybe some of you are aware, they held a sort of an open meeting, information gathering meeting in November, had 70 people, seniors show up to, you know, contribute ideas and answer questions. And there's going to be a monkey, a survey monkey that's going to come out maybe in January, that's going to be also, I'm not sure it's directed strictly to seniors, but it might be. That applies to me, you, Paul, maybe. I don't know. And so that's going to come out, but some of the sites that we're looking at are the same sites that the senior center have looked at. And I can tell you where their sites are if anybody's interested. The one that's owned by the town, of course, is the existing fire station site. And I think you are aware that originally there was somewhat of a barrier to using that site because the historical commission insisted that the facade be maintained. Well, that's gone away. It's no longer required by the historical commission. Therefore, that site could, doesn't have to have the big open driveway in front. It could in fact be moved more forward. It would be a completely raised building, even though it's a historical building. It's been changed so many times over the era, eras that they, that could be completely raised. But that's also being looked at for the senior center. The other public site that we offered was the existing highway department. There's many reasons why that's not a good choice, but we did give that as a second choice. The private sites, there's two on Clark Street. One is owned by Gilher, one is owned by Marvin Keystone. And those are both sites that are offered. The Jim and Eugene Labrie have offered their site on College Highway, but it is not on the road. It's behind the commercially, the, I know, you know, there's a big for sale sign there for the, the lots. And at this very moment, oh yeah, the fourth site, now I remember, the fourth site was owned by the Goral family, which is on the corner of Moosebrook and College Highway. They, we withdrew that. They've had some significant things, death in the family, et cetera, happen. So that's been removed for consideration. They never responded anyway, but good site, but you know, for the, from the family standpoint, that wasn't, that had to be removed. So those are the sites that are offered for the feasibility study. There's a lot of work that's going to have to happen. Costs of everything have soared. Need we say that out loud? Yes, of course, we know that. We are hoping for state monies to help support this. ARPA money is being used for the feasibility study. That's the update. It's ongoing. If you know of anybody who would like to be on this committee, that would be great. It's a lot of work.
Sounds it.
And you also might have heard that Chief Workman, Vardic Chief, has going to retire effective, I think it's June 1, something like that.
All kinds of stuff happening, yes?
All kinds of stuff, for sure. It's a great thing.
Anything else from your end, Dan?
Oh, I'm good. I'm, I'm fine. You won't see me at the town hall meeting. I'll be out of the country, but besides that, everything's good.
All right, given, given all that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In the event that we don't meet the 21st, I, you know, if there really isn't anything, and there probably won't be. If, if Ken's thing is just pages of things we can read, I'm not going to schedule a meeting for that. So if I don't see you all, Joy, Dan, Cindy, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays.
Yeah, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays.
Happy Holidays to you as well.
Happy Holidays.
Joy, your family and loved ones and have a good time. Be well.
Will do.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone.